On your agenda we have, and I'm sorry, please forget my voice, I'm not any better so, and I have pulled the microphones up. We are having some requests that we all please speak into the microphones after the other night. They could not hear anyone, so if everyone would please make sure they speak into the microphone, so please pull your microphone up. I am requesting to fill a bus driver position. So if you look at your position request, we have two vacancies. So we have two resignations, and I'm asking to fill those. If you have paid attention, and we did have to double up routes yesterday, and so students were arriving late at home, so we need to try to find some drivers to fill these positions. Because it's, we can't have kids arriving thirty to forty-five minutes late arriving home, so we need to really try to find some additional drivers. And so I ask that we are able to advertise to fill these positions, and that is general funds.
And you know that we have a hiring freeze on, but there are a few positions that you have to have somebody there, and if you've got a bus, and it's got a busload of children, it's got to be somebody qualified driver to move it.
We have to be able to transport the children.
So we can't switch people around, because you've got to be a certified bus driver.
I agree. I agree. I was just thinking, maybe they can combine routes. I don't know if they've looked at that possibility.
We have, we have done some.
We've combined a couple of routes already.
Okay. Just checking, and also, any grants that could be used to cover this expense at all? Just checking, I mean, I'm gonna ask that question.
I've talked to Ms. Lisa some more, but that's not mine.
Okay.
That's probably not. And a regular bus driver.
For a regular bus driver. Yeah, we're talking about a regular bus driver, okay.
Mr. Johnson is already driving multiple routes.
Right, and we appreciate Mr. Johnson for that, too.
He's driving, Cindy's driving, the mechanic's driving, and those guys should be up there.
And we appreciate all of their hard work, for sure.
So that's saving us several drivers with all these people driving. But if you've got a bus that needs to be moved, it's gotta be moved.
Right.
We will have to reevaluate. I was sharing with Ms. Gibson, I asked Cindy to definitely look at my numbers. I know this two-mile radius is a problem. Just to give you some, kind of some numbers, out of our buses that pick up for Central and Lee's, or our in-town buses, we pick up seven-hundred-and-ninety-seven children. But those kids that live in that, less than that two-mile radius, there's a hundred-and-one that we are not receiving funding for. For Greenville, out of the two-hundred-and-forty-nine children we pick up for the, in the Greenville area, there's fifty-three. And out of those two-hundred-and-forty-nine we're picking up, seventy-nine of those attend Greenville. So you have to kind of look at your numbers here. For Lee, we pick up two-hundred-and-thirty-two children, ninety-five attend Lee, and then eighteen live less than that two miles. For Pinetta, we pick up two-hundred-and-one children, and ninety of those children attend Pinetta, and only thirteen live less than that two miles. And then we have our two vans, a car, and then two of the buses for our ESE students. So we get our weighted funding on those. So we're doing okay on those.
Yeah, I don't think that.
But we're losing.
The mile radius is hailed tightly to ESE children.
No, and we're okay there. It's that other problem that's causing us some issues, and I'll be happy to make copies of that for you.
So in Greenville, the fifty-three kids, you're not receiving funding for those in the two-mile radius?
No ma'am, if they're attending, if you're attending Greenville, now, we have students that we pick up and we bring on in to the charter schools in Central and the high school. So I can go back to that and tell you exactly how many kids we're bringing in. So out of two-hundred-and-forty-nine, twenty-four attend charter schools, a hundred-and-forty-six are either coming into Central or the high school, fifty-three live less than that two-mile radius for Greenville, because seventy-nine are attending Greenville. So out of those, then, I wanted to know how many were, that were not getting that funding on, and that's fifty-three.
And I'm curious about something. In no district in the state of Florida does the state fully fund transportation.
That's correct.
Even in that survey that we received, it said that Madison was doing better than most of the counties around us, but they're not fully funded.
That's correct.
I know that the charter schools give us the funding that they get for transportation. We use the money we get for transportation, and it only covers about half of it. Is the charter schools kicking in more than the FTE money, because it's costing more than the FTE money generated by that child to ride a bus?
No ma'am, the way the contract reads is that what they're kicking in is just foregoing the FTF, the transportation allocation, and that's the way they read, and that's the way they read.
Because I know, I've drove to Tallahassee for years, and of course, it wasn't about the transportation, it was FTE at school. Hearing impaired's a very expensive department. And so Leon County at some point said, "We're not getting funded fully for the children." Every county's gotta make up the difference of what, we gave them our FTE money, and then we also had to give them money on each child that was over there to break even with them. That's the same situation with transportation. Our kids are costing us general fund money to ride, because it's not fully funded, but the charter school kids are riding on just FTE. That doesn't seem accurate.
That's a good point.
That would be a review of contract change for July one.
I mean, because we'd have to take fifty percent of what transportation needs out of our general fund. They have kids that ride, and they don't contribute anything except what they get for transportation, which is what we get for transportation per child.
How many students are we transporting to the charter schools?
I would have to look at their transportation worksheets, or their FEFP worksheets. I think the Creative Arts Academy has seventy-two on theirs, and I believe the James Madison, it might, it might be fifty, I can look and see.
And can you figure out how much per child transportation is costing, and then look at per child what we're getting from the charter schools?
I can, and will.
You know, I mean, that's just, I mean, to me, it's just kind of fair.
Now, it, like Dr. Pickles said, we need to address that in our contract negotiations.
Well, I mean, it's not that much difference, it's not worth the trouble, but if it's a good.
It, it could, we need to look at it.
I can tell you, it's a hundred, between the two charter schools, I cannot tell you which one, it's a hundred-and-thirty-six children total. I do not know the total number for.
So that's the seventy and fifty, pretty much.
Imagine something to look at and stuff, because, you know, it's like.
Absolutely.
You're having to eat the shortfall.
Well, we would.
And if they don't take a little bit of theirs.
We would treat them at a billing rate like we do even the, the internal funds, as a calculated per-mile cost, based on our actual transportation costs. So I understand where you're coming from, and let me work on that for you, or for us.
Mr. Reeves.
The funding for the transportation, is that based on the number of kids at school, or the number of kids riding the bus?
It's based on the number of kids riding the bus. Yeah, there's a lot, obviously, a lot more kids that they're getting funded on as enrolled students than there are on the transportation part of the funding.
So when we divide that out, it's not, we probably don't need to divide it enrolled versus enrolled, it needs to be riding the bus versus riding the bus, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And just one thing, you know, you've got those, statutorily, providing transportation is a responsibility of the charter school, not the district. So in the charters, the district was nice and said, "Yeah, well, you know, go ahead and provide this," because you know.
Yeah, and I don't want to be hard on them, and it's fine, I mean, it works out well that they ride the bus, but if we're having to take care of all the shortfall.
Right, oh absolutely.
Then part of that, they get, for the number of kids that they get, their hundred-and-thirty, whatever, they get FTE transportation money, they do turn that over to us, but it's not covered.
Oh absolutely, and I just want the board to note, under that statute, y'all aren't required to provide any transportation, so you're free to negotiate that how you see fit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Ms. Williamson. Thank you, Mr. Copeland, for looking into that.
But going back to where we were, I will make the motion to approve the advertisement for the bus drivers.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
I just did that.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Williamson, second by Ms. Bell, to approve the personnel action. Any, any, any more further debate, questions, discussion? By a show of hands, all in favor? Five-zero, Ms. Becky. Three point two, permission to advertise changes to policy sixty-three-twenty, purchasing and contracting for commodities and contractual services. Dr. Pickles?
Mr. Stahlnecker worked on the changes that Mr. Reeves, this is our Neola policy, you know, we do contract with Neola, so these are our policies, and he took the actual Neola policy and incorporated the changes that Mr. Reeves put in, and so he has it. Are you gonna show it on the screen? So this is permission to advertise.
And it's also on the board documents, the PDF.
Yes.
If I can, like, for instance, the first change, the red strikeout, that was approved in September, right?
Correct, yes.
So we, we don't have a clean version from Neola yet, that we could, where we could just show, where we could just show the changes that we're advertising now?
This is it.
No, no, but.
Sam, are you saying this is right there, TR?
Yeah, but scroll down. Okay, that, that red strikeout has already been changed, that's not.
That is correct, I understand what you're saying. They did not have, they published these versions to update, and so I'd either have to update.
They don't have a clean version that we can.
That is correct.
Okay.
So we can show you that, what you want updated, based off of what time it's funded by earlier.
My copy, on the PDF, it's all in a different color, it's all in green. Is it that way on your board documents?
Let me bring the PDF over there.
I know, we got red.
The PDF shows.
Page four is the first one. I think one more.
I can't see that far.
Keep going.
Paragraph B?
Yep.
Paragraph B, second sentence.
Actually, it's the first one where it says two-fifty, and then the second one where it's reworded, are both the changes that y'all have discussed about. And then, the next one is on page five.
Let's start more stuff.
Any questions for Mr. Stahlnecker? Is there a motion to approve the permission to advertise changes to policy sixty-three-twenty, purchasing and contracting for commodities and contractual services?
I make the motion to advertise the changes to policy sixty-three-twenty.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Alfred, second by Ms. Williamson, to advertise changes to policy sixty-three-twenty, purchasing and contracting for commodities and contractual services. Any discussion or questions?
I just have a question. What's the next step in this, this, the process?
We advertise for twenty-one, twenty-eight days, and we open it up at the board meeting following the twenty-eight days for public comment. And after public comment, the board votes to approve. We'll make any changes based off of public comment. Or if you have any changes now, I can make changes now prior to advertising.
And Mr. Daniels, you can do it differently if you want. You're not allowed to advertise it for less than twenty-eight days, but if you want that procedure to be different, now's the time.
I still don't agree with the amount, the two-fifty and the one dollar.
The actual amount, y'all can, well, you can change it now, or you can change it at the time of the hearing. All you're doing is advertising it so that the board can have it here or not, but if you want to go for a different amount then, you certainly do.
I still think it's just too low.
Yeah, that's one reason I raised the question, because I, I mean, I looked at it, I pondered on this, I looked at it from different angles, and.
Do you maybe have a question for Mr. Copeland, could he clarify something?
Well, the amount, it's the amount for me as well.
Is he a mouth?
I mean, having talked with the district staff, I think, just overall, I think, without having heard the district staff, and, you know, I think if we get a, get a balanced, some balanced feedback from all sides, I think we'd be in a better position to make a good, sound decision. I, I just, I just don't feel comfortable going, changing, edging this in stone for the long term at this moment.
I don't know how long-term it has to be. For instance, could you have a policy, and you see what it's like for, how it's going for six months from now, and possibly make some changes at that point?
What is the amount right now, Mr. Stahlnecker?
Let me go back to the current policy.
It's either five or ten thousand, isn't it?
Six-three-twenty.
While he's looking that up, I will, as I shared our whole PO process, there are multiple people back there. Now that it's lowered to the two-fifty, as you asked us to do.
Yeah, it's.
On the list of POs that you asked me to approve last week, that you approved when I went through, I've now learned how to attach minutes, so I now know how to do that, because Ms. Bishop was not here. So Ms. Kathy typed up our minutes, I went through and attached the minutes to every one of those, and over half of those, the board had already approved, and so now they have two sets of minutes in there. And now, on this check run, well, after they come through, you will approve those a third time, because they already had minutes where they were prior approved, and now that it's been lowered again, they have a second set of minutes attached, because we went through them again, because, for whatever reason, like, there was the Microsoft volume licensing, you had prior approved it, and so those minutes were uploaded, and now I've uploaded the other minutes where you approved that, so they have two sets of minutes, and then you'll approve the check run when that check is actually paid. So you are approving things three times now.
When we approved it the first time, were we, were we, was that a proven requisition, a PO, what was that approved?
That was a PO that was broad.
The first time?
Mm-hmm.
And the second time?
Because it was over the.
The second approval was for what?
It was ten originally.
And the second amount that we approved, I mean, the second time we approved it.
Because a motion was anything over two-hundred-and-fifty, and because it had not actually been ordered, everything that's now over ten-fifty, it's now gone ahead. We brought it to you before we ever went ahead and placed the actual order. Now that it's in there, anything that's out there is coming before you.
When you brought it to us before we placed the order, would not that been a requisition, a PO?
That, that would have been the requisition PO, and then I think what Dr. Pickles is saying, we also have the proposed AP check run, that we need to get approved for everything over two-fifty, and that check run that we're wanting to cut includes those amounts from the POs that have already been approved.
So we're approving stuff more than one time?
Yes, and I'm gonna, if, y'all, while we're talking through this, you know, I want to get y'all more information than you need, and more summaries, but in my experience of twenty-three years, including a CFO of a hundred-million-dollar convenience store chain, it's really cumbersome, as far as the time benefit, and, and again, y'all need to be seeing the check runs, every single check, no matter what dollar amount, but it's, my time's better spent in other places. And, and we're, we're, I'm already approving every single invoice, and it's unlikely that I'm gonna stop a department head that puts in a two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-dollar invoice and question them much on it.
I just, I need clarification of, as a board member, how, how we can be assured, because all of the people that you're saying were approving these checks before were approving them.
Right.
And we wound up with an attorney bill that was very high, and, and as a board member, that cannot happen again. That cannot happen with us not knowing and being blindsided with that. That is my concern. I mean, I respect that you're saying multiple people were checking it, multiple people were checking it those two years when the bill came to that amount. I mean, that, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
And, and again, as, as sitting here, I need some assurance that that is not what happened again.
Mr. Alfred, I, I think getting the check runs now timely, getting the AP listings and looking at them, it, it, that, that doesn't say you can't question something and stop it, but if, if we'd have been doing that in a normal fashion, you would have been seeing things that you, maybe you didn't see before, and.
But for the check run, if that, you can't stop it. If we've already received the product or received the service, it's gonna have to be paid for.
Right. You're, you're correct.
So then you don't have a say in, do you want this service or not? It's already been done, whether you wanted it or not, you can't vote no on it, you gotta pay it.
Well, if we could do, let's think about this, the PO, the PO listing, not necessarily approving everything over two-fifty, but we can lay it out there and say, "Here's the POs we have that have gone through to the approval chain this week," and, and, and let you, you see it, and we can, we can do the same thing, we could give you a running total for each vendor that's on that PO this week, that will show you what we've spent with them There's a multitude of ways we could do it.
Is your staff, are you fully staffed as of right now?
No, I am not. I'm able to utilize some contract help, so I can't sit here and say that I'm totally understaffed, but no, I'm not fully staffed, and I have not been since I've been here.
You had said earlier in one of the other meetings that you could get us the information before we actually meet on Wednesday.
Excuse me, you'll have to speak into the microphone, we've got to honor our people at home.
Yes ma'am. You had said earlier in one of the prior meetings that you could get us the information that we need, and if we wanted to review it and contact you back, if we had any concerns, we could do that, instead of meeting on the Wednesday nights also, is that correct?
That, that is correct, I'm, I can make time, most any time, to stop, and, and, and actually, it would help me, rather than trying to answer questions sometimes off the cuff, to give you a more definite answer, and then, you know, I'm glad for you to take that answer and share it with whoever you want to share it with. But, absolutely.
Yeah, I, you know, just coming, I really believe, you know, having taken two or three steps back, thinking, I'm thinking that that'll probably be our better option, if our main objective is to be fiscally responsible. My thing is, having the additional meetings, I'm not sure if that's even saving us money, you know, so I think we need to really kind of step back and reconsider the whole thing. Because I really don't think that it's fair to, to Mr. Copeland and his staff to pull away from his regular responsibilities, handling payroll and everything else that they have to do to accommodate, well, and I understand the position we're in, but the problem didn't occur as a result of them inadequately handling the funds or what have you. It was basically a reduction in the FTE count, so it wasn't their fault as far as.
Exactly what happened.
Yeah, exactly what, what went down, so, I think if he would make an extra asserted effort to accommodate our requests, whenever we need them, or whenever we ask, or what have you, I think that would better serve the overall district.
And, and I'm with you, but I understand Mr. Alfred, and what I have to look back on is my years of dealing with boards, and, and, and we do need, we do need, and we want to provide you with a snapshot on a weekly basis of where we are, we all need to do a better job of, and we've getting our books now caught up with, where we can give you an accurate snapshot, and I think that would help all of you identify any, anything that y'all see as an anomaly, or an item you want to dig into more. And, and that can be a work in progress, that, we can build on it, but, you know, back to what Mr. Daniels just said, we, you know.
Could I interject, please? Do y'all recall that he's had change in people, but he's also had to learn a new software system? It's been cumbersome, we have not received the help and assistance from our consortium that we've needed. We've been working with the NEFAC consortium for our help, because we have not pace jumped off into this, they've been learning right on.
He discussed it in the.
The other pace districts.
By no means do I think Mr. Copeland has done anything wrong, but the public's perception through all of this that's going on is that we're not doing our job, and our job is the money.
Right, but are we saving money by?
And to, and some of the things that we didn't know about, the public's looking like, "Why didn't you know? You should have known, you're in charge of the money." So that's what we're trying to do, be in charge of the money.
But you have an open-door policy.
Now, I don't mind, but that, the public's not involved in the open-door policy.
I know, but if, if we see something that we do not agree with.
If the service has already been rendered, or the product has already been used, whether we agree with it or not, it's got to be paid.
But they're saying we already approved it prior to making these adjustments, so we, we're approving stuff two and three times.
But we don't approve all the requisitions and POs, we haven't been doing that, that's what we want to do.
Can, can, can we, we can continue to get the PO listings to each of you every week, as timely as we can get them, and then, again, if anybody sees anything on there that raises a red flag, you can immediately contact me or my assistant, Sandy Fletcher, and we could address that and, and, and talk through it, and if it's something that we needed to call a board meeting to discuss, or whatever, we could do it at that point, but to me, that would be a process that would be more efficient and.
I don't, I think if we have a way of approving what is going to be spent, and we approve that, then I don't need to approve the check to pay for it.
Well, that's.
Because we approved it to buy it or to use it.
And that, and that's what I was just referring to, the, the PO listing, yeah.
You won't have a say in what is spent, because the public thinks that we're not doing our job, and I don't care if we have to meet two times a week, we were elected to do this job as financial overseers of this district.
But when we're spending extra, Mr. Reeves, do you get paid extra to be here on Wednesday nights? So that's another bill that we have processed through general funds? Does it come?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's another bill, we already started.
Let, let me give you something, and I hope Dr. Pickles. Let, let, let me give you something and I hope Dr. Pickles is, is okay, we, we...
Hang on.
Yeah.
Is it, could we bring general fund POs? Because grants, y'all, I shouldn't say this way, y'all should be fine with us approving things from grants under the threshold, whichever threshold. Y'all should be fine with those if we stay with the original policy or, I know, y'all should be fine with those because that's what I have stressed and stressed and stressed. Come from a grant, can this come from a grant? Do we, can we take things from a grant?
And we appreciate that and I, and grants that does help us, but if something's being bought with a grant that we feel is irresponsible to buy, that's still not a good thing. Ms. Hill, will you come on? Uh-oh. Mr. Copeland, goodness, Hill, the microphone, please.
We're gonna allow Ms. Hill to speak since she's one of our employees and could provide us with some information.
Well, I, I can give you some information about like the grants. Every grant has been brought to you. We cannot submit it if the school board has not approved it. And in it, it spells out in every line item what is going to be purchased. So again, you, if you're approving the grant, but then we have to bring the POs back, then you're approving it again because it's already said in the grant what we have to spend it on. Plus, if you don't agree, once we bring it back, then we have to send an amendment to DOE. So it's not a matter of you can change, we can change directions once that grant is submitted, we have to buy what we've said we were gonna buy in the grant. And, and DOE has, over the last couple of years, I mean, they make you spell out item by item what you're gonna be buying.
It's very specific.
And so I, I, I can't see why that would need to come back when you've already approved it.
So in essence, DOE is monitoring what you...
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
They let us know when we have not spent our twenty-five percent, our fifty percent, we are sent an email, why have you not spent this amount? And we are doing very good at spending and staying in that threshold.
But they will tell us. When we, when we have purchased something that wasn't in the grant, then we'll get cited on it. So we have to stay within the, the confines of what was written in the grant.
Let me ask you a question about a grant.
Okay.
Uh, I know grants involve millions of dollars. What's the benefit of carrying over a grant to the next year?
Much of the grants you can't.
Okay.
If you don't spend it...
Because I've heard a statement made in here, I had a hundred thousand dollars left over. Well, we're not in the business of making money here.
Right.
That money should go to the schools, to the children. And, and I'm wondering what that, yeah, that, that's what I heard here.
And I'll answer, we both can answer that because part of it, from the grants that I've dealt with, Perkins Grant Secondary and DJ, DJJ Grant, what the grant, when I did them as grant manager for those particular ones, I spent them to almost zero every year. However, all the districts across the state of Florida may not do that. So that money goes back to the state, then the state will put that money back into a pot and look at those states who, or districts who did spend all their money and then reallocate it. It's called rollover or roll forward money. In, in many, in many cases with DJJ's grant or Perkins Secondary, I get just, our secondary grant was only like thirty-five or forty thousand dollars. I'd get anywhere from two to four thousand, maybe six thousand dollars extra in January of the school year.
Yeah.
Because other districts, that's a bit, that's where a lot of it comes from.
You did the good job then, but I've also heard there's money in grants, like for instance, at Central, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, and in other words, money is sitting there and it's not being spent. No?
No.
No.
I know our goal in tracking the grants is to look at the percentage of the year that has elapsed and to look at the expenditures based on the amended budgets of the grants and you, if you're fifty percent into the year, you don't wanna have your Title I grant or Title II grant at twenty-five percent expended.
Right.
You want to keep that percentage level and yes, I want to utilize everything we can from grant funds and like Ms. Hill said, there is a meticulous budget with each of those grant funds and when you do, when you change it, you get the amendment and we have to amend our budget in our system and it's from payroll lines to benefit lines to supplies to all the function and object codes, they're broken out on there. So, and, and we have done a, a pretty good job of do, of expending grant money more equally with the progression within the year. And I wanna get back to Ms. Williamson. I, if I was sitting in your shoes, I'd be wanting to see what, what you're talking about also. What I, what I was proposing is to still get the PO listings for all our POs just like you are now, review them with the understanding, if any one of y'all have questions or issues with any proposed purchase, come to us and we can stop it, we can talk through it, we can look into it more. You, you would still be reviewing everything that we're proposing to buy.
So everything we're asking for, you would be sending it to us and if we have any questions, we could contact you?
A- absolutely, but, but I'm, uh, again, what, wanna be transparent with you, with y'all and with the public and the thing is, it's, it looks like, you know, we have tentative audit and audited numbers now. Uh, we met today and...
You can go ahead and tell us.
It's gonna be the first uptick we've had that I'm looking at on this ten-year chart in our tentative fund balance on our unrestricted funds. Now, this is the last, the fiscal year in June thirtieth of eighteen.
It's our two, that, two thousand seventeen, eighteen year.
We're, we're up one percent from the audited financial statements of sixteen, seventeen and we're a little bit over five percent. Now, that doesn't change much of our projection that we're looking at because my, my unaudited fund balance ratio that I had for last year, I, I had it at four-point-seven percent. Well, we actually had audit adjustments in our favor this past year. That still has to go through the channels in Tallahassee, but meeting with the auditors today...
As she said, this is preliminary, it could change. This is the first time...
She was...
That we've never had negative financial...
Or, or it's the first time that our fund balance has actually ticked up. That's not to say we don't have a rough time ahead of us because I, I, I had it projected at four-point-seven percent, so there's not a big difference. But I, you know, I thought it was positive and I thought it was a good indication that we're not spending frivolously.
Sounds good, Mr. Copeland, thank you. We appreciate what you're doing.
Well, that's not me, it's everybody.
Well, everybody.
Yeah, it's...
Back to the grants, um, I was texting Ms. Roderick, um, she had a doctor's appointment this afternoon. I can either have her call each of you one-on-one or have her do a presentation at the next meeting, but we are, we are, each one of the, um, program specialists, grant program specialists, in fact, one of them, there was a concern about one of the grants, um, that I've now shifted back to her and because they had not, there were some concerns about the salary not coming out of that and the money was not, and it actually was, um, the rite of passage payment had not come from it because we only pay them twice a year, correct?
No, we act, we actually pay them monthly or by over every...
Okay, well, you hadn't, you hadn't drawn it out anyways, that money's had not been drawn down off that one particular grant.
How often would you be sending the POs to us if we did it that way?
Exactly like I'm doing it now, every week.
I still think that the public has lost faith in a lot of us, the board members and other people too. They need to see us keeping up with the spending and what, and knowing that we know what's going on.
If the money is right and things are calculating just right, they gonna know we doing something. So I agree with sending the thing, I mean, sending the information to us once a week.
But the public doesn't see that. They don't, they don't see us getting that.
And, and I think the public is interested. We have many, many people watching.
And they don't see us calling, Mr. Copeland, they don't see any of that, they can't keep up with that.
Well, the public just heard Mr. Copeland say that the, the, we're, we're trending upward and as well as, now, when you say the public, you can't speak for all of the public, cause I've heard from the public as well.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's different factions of the public.
And they have said, the pub, some of the public that I've heard in, from, have said, said that these special me, these meetings have, is costing the taxpayers money and, and we're not saving money by having the, all of these extra special meetings as well. So now that come from the public as well.
I've heard the same thing, Mr. Dan.
So you can't just say the public and, 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 you know, just say that the, the few that you've heard from represent the overall...
Well, the ones that were at the, at the high school and all the meetings and stuff, they don't trust any of us. They don't trust, you know, they don't trust us, they don't trust...
Well, I get that, I mean, we're, we're elected officials that come with the territory.
But over time, if we do what we say we gonna do and do what...
But they have to see us doing it to build the trust.
They could look at us and see us doing it and still don't agree with us.
Mr. Reeves, hadn't you made the statement that, um, these need to be put on the website that, that are, that are...
I had recommended that for transparency, that's not a legal requirement.
I mean, I, I think that would be a good idea. I mean, if, if people are against having meetings, then, um, I do think that every bill that comes through this district office needs to be put on the website where everybody can see that it's very transparent. Um, I, I still, I still have concerns that, um, that something needs to be in place where we're not blindsided again by a bill that we know nothing about and we're, we're held accountable for the bill and we know nothing about the bill.
I agree, Mr. Alfred. I don't mind meeting weekly, but then again, I'm in a different position than some of you, I realize that.
I, I mean, I don't mind meeting either and to be honest with you, I didn't know that reviewing the bills would turn into a meeting like this.
No, I thought it was just gonna be strictly looking at the invoices.
Yeah, I, I didn't know it was gonna be a meeting like this.
Not be here for hours doing it. So it's, it's turned into actually another meeting, which...
May I go back to Ms. Bell's original question?
Yes.
On your original question, the first change we made was on page four. It's under the category of exception to competitive bidding requirements. The original dollar amount was five thousand dollars and we changed that to two-fifty. There was some language change in there on, on the second paragraph. The original statement said the superintendent is authorized to purchase, however, it suggested we change the language, competitive solicitations are not required for purchases of commodities. So that's just a grammar change. The, the dollar amount changed from five thousand to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Now, was that the, was five thousand what was inserted there in September?
Five thousand is what was approved.
In September?
Yes.
Because what was posted on the website was one number and then that was increased in September.
Increased in September.
I'm looking at the approved document that's in there right now. It's five thousand dollars. And then the next change was on page five. Under contracts, sub-paragraph C. In that dollar amount, it says, except as, as expressly provided herein, the board shall approve and execute all contracts on behalf of the district involving expenditures of public funds in amount of greater than twenty-five thousand dollars. And the proposal was to change that to one dollar. And under, actually, there's three places, under paragraph A, B, and C, all those dollar amounts were changed from twenty-five thousand to one dollar in the draft. Uh, under purchase order approval, paragraph B, it was...
Can I jump in? If you go back to what was approved in September, that first number was ten thousand, not five thousand. That, that, what, what is posted in a clean copy on our website had the old, had the pre-September number. So that one's gone up now to, to ten thousand dollars and then those other ones, I believe, went up as well. That, that's what I discovered when we went back and, and it didn't matter, you changed them anyway. So I mean, uh, but, uh, I think where you are now has been changed to fifty thousand dollars in September.
Right, and let me look at, let me look at the bottom up and see the review date. Okay. So then we changed the others from the, the ten thousand to a dollar. And I think that covers all the changes that you had.
Mr. Copeland, let me ask you a question. We, we're not trying to make your, complicate your life at all over there. I know you're doing everything you can to accommodate us. What would be the best situation, do you think, for us to do right now in order for us to be, become very fiscally aware of what's going on?
Well, I'm a little bit selfish because I don't like meeting all the time and, but that's a personal issue and, and, um, I think making sure we get you timely information, the same thing we're getting you now, and then tweak it, add to it, uh, make myself, my staff available to answer questions, um, which we are available. You would be, you would be seeing exa, the same thing you're seeing now. I would be available to review it, to answer specific questions. We could always, if we're looking at the proposed, or the purchase orders proposed for approval, we could still stop them for some reason if any of you had an issue that we had, that we reviewed that needed to be put on hold. I, I just, I, I think, again, I wanna, I want the public to be comfortable. I want everybody to be comfortable, but we're, you know, we're trying to manage and, you know, we can all make an extra little time to, to meet, I understand that. Um, I just, um, I, I just, I just think maybe we can find a more efficient way where every one of y'all still has the ability to...
If we received the, the list of POs and there was one that we haven't, if I have an issue with this one, Ms. Bell has an issue with that one and we call you and tell you and you pull that one off, could we have an item at our regular meetings, cause we meet every two weeks, that would address the ones that we pulled off or would that not be enough time? I mean, would we need to meet before that?
No, I, I, I think that's a, that's doable and, and we could always, it could be a subjective issue where if we have one that's a significant item that we, we need to address sooner, we would just have to look at that on a case-by-case basis. Truthfully, I don't see a lot that comes through the chain now that I think y'all are gonna have a lot of heartburn with, but...
If we did the POs like that and then at our regular meetings each two weeks, we could get it on the thing, you could email it to us or we could get it in paper of all the checks.
Oh, a- a- absolutely, that need, that, that, that needs to be done, the checks with the detail that we added last time, a- absolutely. And again, if there's an issue of an item that somebody has a question with on a PO that's time-sensitive, we could address that as needed.
Could I also suggest if, if a PO, um, instead of waiting the two weeks, he could direct you to the person that created the PO, so say Ms. Hill, um, it's her department or, um, Mr. Killingsworth with maybe Safe Schools, cause he has something he's actually gonna have to bring to the board. So maybe you do not get all your questions answered in the board and then all of a sudden you see that PO, you could, and he defers you back to him. You could get your questions answered without waiting until that next meeting. But if you still wanted to wait, you could then bring it to the board meeting.
It just seems like we, every time we come with like, what do we do, what do we do, we, we need to know what we're doing.
But I'm writing it down.
Okay, let's go scenario. If I have an issue with something on a PO...
That you have with instruction on materials.
And he tells me that's under Ms. Hill and I call her and she explains it to me and I still don't agree.
Then you could bring it to the board.
Then I bring it, what, back to Mr. Copeland to put on hold until the board meets.
Yes, but maybe you could get your, but if she answers your questions...
That I then change my mind and agree.
Yes.
I call Mr. Copeland back and say, I'm okay with this.
So I think you're saying any board member can direct Mr. Copeland to put the PO on hold and not pay it until the next board meeting, is that...
If we have a... If we have an issue with, with an item.
For their reasons.
Right. And so, and if, and if you have times where nobody has an issue with anything on there, I mean, we get milk at the lunchroom, the milk's got to be paid for. I don't, I mean, you, who would have an issue with something like that?
Food and safety and student welfare are gonna have to be taken care of, or I'm gonna have to call the department, the chancellor, and the CFO have both told me to call them immediately if y'all try to stop anything. So you cannot affect student welfare, um, anything to do with food or safety. So those are the main concerns.
I know that we had been asked to, to call Ms. Becky and not to call you guys. So do we call you if we have a problem with a PO, or do we call Ms. Becky to get you?
We've been going through Ms. Becky the last few months.
That's what we were told.
So.
So do you want us to do that still, Mr. Copeland, or call you directly if we have a problem with a PO?
I don't have an issue.
That's our policy.
That's how the policy reads. I, I, if, if you wanna go through Becky, it, she, she may be able to help log it and make sure, it, it may.
That's fine. I just wanted to get that clear. You said call, you don't.
It may, it may, it may be going that route stops me better than calling me directly, if you understand what I mean.
That's fine.
We are, we finish our financial audit. I do not know when they start right back again, because they are fixing to turn right around and come back. And that was also part of our other problem. We had three auditors in here hammering him constantly. So, um, for stuff. And they are fixing to turn right around and start our next year. So we finished one, start again.
Can we agree to maybe stop the Wednesday meetings and follow the procedure that we talked about if you have a problem?
We have a motion. We have a motion.
Yeah, we do have a motion by Mr. Alfred. Need to get back to that.
Mr. Reeves.
Sir.
You're absolutely correct on the policy. We did do two amendments, one in eighteen-two and one in nineteen-one. Since we started working on this, I pulled both of them and Neola did not publish them. So the only one, the one that I'm working on is what Neola had published before we made those statements. That's why there's a five thousand dollar difference on what I have on the web versus the ten thousand dollars that's in the draft one that we approved in September. You follow me?
Not at all. The, the September one, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be funny. I wasn't trying to be funny. The, the, the September one, it was approved or was not approved?
We advertised it. You guys approved it. But immediately, I had, when, when they're approved by the board.
You're saying the reason it wasn't updated on the website was there, there was yet another amendment pending?
Because y'all are gonna change it again. So that's why my number was different than what we talked about earlier.
But, but the, but the September numbers are the correct ones?
Correct, ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
We updated to that.
Mr. Reeves.
Ma'am.
The one that you was looking at, the one that was prior to this one, the one you're talking about, they had the less money on it. I would think that would probably be the best one, because it's offering less money.
The, the one, the, the one that's in effect now has the higher dollar figure.
Okay, the one you're talking about has less.
The, the one that, uh, was in effect prior to September one had, had lower dollar figure.
Well, let's try to do the lower dollar figure with that, what you got.
Well, the, the, the way you could do that if you wanted, your, the, the motion and all that that's pending is to go with what's before you that has the dollar, the one dollar and the two fifty, et cetera. If y'all wanted to go back to what it was before, you could, uh, direct Mr. Stahlnacher to substitute in those dollar figures and advertise it for, for a public hearing. Mr. Reeves?
Sir. I haven't, haven't directed Neola to make the change that we made in Septem, that you guys, we worked on in September and approved in December. I haven't directed them to make that change. So currently, what's on the webpage, if you want to leave it at five thousand dollars, that's what's on the webpage.
But it doesn't matter what's on the webpage. If they approved it in December, that's the, that's.
Okay, that's fine.
So, so anyway, that, that's what you'd have to do if you wanted to go back to those numbers.
So we'll vote on this one that you have up here now? And then we could turn around and ask for it to stay the same, I mean, you go to the prior one?
I can make, I can make those changes and put it back to the original numbers now. And you guys say, yes, that's what we want, then I advertise tomorrow.
Remember now, the advertising is, you're putting it in the paper, we're gonna, we're gonna consider making changes to this, this, and then you, you have a proposed, uh, amendment that sets out what you wanna do. If you advertise this and have your proposal at one dollar or ten million dollars, it doesn't matter. You, the day of the hearing, you set the actual dollar amount.
Okay.
So you, you don't have.
So it doesn't take effect for, right now?
Nothing takes effect until you have yet another public hearing, that's what Mr. Stahlnacher's saying, in twenty-eight days after advertising. You listen to the public, because see, the public may come in and have other ideas that we haven't even thought about. And then y'all will, y'all will assign dollar figures.
So this is not set in stone at the moment? Okay.
No, ma'am, no, no, no. But, but if you advertise it, you gotta give them some idea of what you're thinking about doing.
Okay.
And, and that's the point of it. So, but, but anyway, to, to get specifically back to what you said, you can advertise it the way it's set out here. You can direct Mr. Stahlnacher to change the way it's advertised or, or any other way you wanna have it.
Okay. Well, we have a motion by Mr. Alfred to permission to advertise changes to policy sixty-three twenty, purchasing and contracting for commodities and contractual services. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Williamson. Any further discussion or questions? By a show of hands, all in favor? Three zero, Ms. Becky.
You didn't ask for, was it those?
All those opposed.
Opposed.
Oh, I'm sorry, opposed. Three two. Review, review of invoices and purchase orders. Dr. Pickles?
Mr. Copeland emailed you, I believe he emailed you, but they're also posted. There's our list of invoices that we need approved, um, over the two fifty, and then the check run. For this week. So do you have any question on anything? And he has listed the project name there for you on the POs that will, for this week.
Let me ask you something, Mr. Copeland, about, for instance, when you're using towing, is that, do, do they look for the cheapest, I mean, do they look for what would be the best price to, to business with, or?
I, I do know from dealing with transportation more so early on in my tenure here that, yes, we try to deal local with everything being equal.
Right.
There was times, and I'm not referring to just towing right now, I'm just, the, the whole process.
Right.
I do know from talking to Mr. Johnson and looking at some invoices and, and POs sometime back, that at times we ran into issues where we had to use Valdosta vendors instead of, of local, and we talked through that. As far as the towing goes, Ms. Gibson, I, I'm sure they use what they feel like is the most cost beneficial at the time, but I can't tell you that we shop it around at that point or whatever, yeah.
The towing, I think it's, it comes out a lot cheaper to use local.
No, I, I, I wanna use local.
If you use someone from Valdosta, they're gonna charge you to come from Valdosta, then do the tow.
No, I'm, I'm in favor of doing local, for sure. But I mean, I, I'm looking at tires and, you know, there's different places that sell tires in Madison, or those type things, you know.
I, I, I feel, a, again, I haven't followed up and verified and everything, but I feel like the relationships gained over the years from the Transportation Department working with the vendors that it, they have, they're, they're making the, the smart decisions and, um, and, and of course, when you get up to the higher, the, the, the bigger numbers, there's gonna be more of a thought process.
There's lots purchased here in Madison, I mean, which is good, you know, that's a good thing.
Right, right. And I will say that, and I can't sit here and tell you the specific bills or what, but I, I will say that Mr. Johnson's, Ivan Johnson's come into my office several times with quotes and explained to me what had to be done and why he was taking this route.
Good, that's good.
And our transportation, even though like Ms. Williamson said, you don't nearly get the funding that you spend. What, what we've, what we've budgeted based on prior experience, they've actually been maintaining a very level, if not below, budget. Operation. And then we do have a few new buses that are on, uh, that have, you know, warranties and stuff, so.
I know, um, and if we've got money and capital outlay, we need to look at some more buses. I was behind one the other day that looked like, I know everybody in town was watching it go down the road, because so much smoke was coming out the back, you thought it was on fire. And my son was with me, he said, "Do some mechanic," he said, it's, I said, "Is it gonna catch fire?" He said, "No, but the motor's going." And it, it, and there's another bus, ninety-eight, that is a nineteen ninety-nine bus, that is twenty years old.
Well, we, now, we, we, when we just did our, uh, our rolling stock insurance renewal, that, we have to provide them a, a list of the rolling stock. I did sit down with, with Mr. Johnson and we went bus by bus on the ones that he felt were worth spending any money to keep rolling versus not doing that. And, and of course, taking into account having, you know, if we've got thirty buses, we, we, we need an extra one or two sitting there. So we have eliminated, scrapped, sold for what we could get, a lot of the, the, the older ones. And we do wanna get back on the cycle of dropping a few buses in every year instead of waiting seven years and having a big purchase. I need to stop. We utilized, we tried to utilize our local capital improvement funds as much as we could last year, and, and we try to always. I need to, I need to wrap my hands around that and let's start looking at what we may be able to forecast. Let's get through this tough year that we're gonna have to finish up and, and, and we'll sure look into that.
Ms. Williamson, do you have the bus number that was smoking?
One oh one, it was a, it's an E S E bus that has the wheelchair lift door in the front.
I think something was wrong with bus nine, he was making some repairs on bus nine and.
And I know that ninety-eight is a nineteen ninety-nine, because I was the first one to drive it to Tallahassee on a field trip. And the shop arm wouldn't open.
I'll make sure Mr. Killingsworth gets with Mr. Johnson and they check on those two. Do we have a motion?
Any further questions or Dr.? Mr. Copeland, or is there a motion to approve the review of invoices and purchase orders?
I make the motion to approve the invoices and purchase orders.
We have a motion by Mr. Alfred, second by Mr. Daniels, to approve the invoices and purchase orders. Any discussion or questions? By a show of hands, all in favor? Oppose? Five zero, Becky. Three point.
We never did decide how we want to do, let's make a decision on how we want to do this.
Oh, I thought we'll.
Do we want to get the, the POs every week? Be able to call him and do that whole little process? Do we need to vote on that's the way we're gonna do it, or just a consensus, Mr. Reeves?
If we agree on it, I can see, how, how do you, what do you think it's?
Right now, your last instructions were that you wanted to have meetings that each and every Wednesday. If y'all don't wanna do that, you need to vote, number one, to not have those meetings each and every Wednesday. And then I think you also need to vote on the exact procedure you wanna follow. If you wanna have, uh, uh, invoices, um, posted to the website by, let's say, Wednesday of each week, and then, um, I think what you said was, any board member can direct staff not to pay those until the next school board meeting. Um, you know, if, if that's what you wanna do, you need to, I would think, number one, make a motion to cancel the Wednesday meetings, and number two, make a motion and set out exactly what y'all are intending to do.
And then if we have an issue with an item that needs to be done before a regular meeting, you just have to schedule a call meeting.
Do we have a motion to cancel our Wednesday meetings?
I make a motion to cancel our Wed, Wednesday meetings.
We have a motion by Ms. Bell, second.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Daniels. We'll, from this point on, we'll cancel our Wednesday meetings. All in favor? Oppose? Five zero, Becky. All right. Do we have a motion to, uh, does someone have a motion they can propose to, for procedure? What procedure would we like to follow?
I will make the motion that all invoices be posted to the website by Wednesday of each week. Um, any school board member, um, can address staff to not pay the invoices if they have questions or concerns until the next meeting.
To, to hold them until?
To hold them until the next meeting.
Mr. Alfred, you, when you, instead of saying invoices, we should be saying purchase orders.
Okay.
Yeah, just to.
All right. Would you repeat that again, Mr. Alfred?
Okay, I will. Um, purchase orders should be posted to the website by Wednesday of each week. Um, any board member can address the staff to not pay the POs, to hold to the next meeting if they have concerns.
And then the, the, the purchase order is posted on Wednesday. If no one comments, will be paid when?
They would be paid, they would be paid either the next day, if it's something that was an urgent turnaround, or by the next Thursday, which is our regular AP.
Okay. We're talking two different things. We're talking APs in, in the, the AP check run, and we're talking POs. We're talking two different things.
The, the, the POs, it would, it would depend, Mr. Reeves, when they act, because it still has to go through the process of being finalized and then receiving the goods, and it would just depend.
Well, I, and, and my point is, if, if you post them on Wednesday and they're paid out on Thursday, y'all won't have time.
No, 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 POs have to, if it's a PO of a whatever dollar amount, they still have to then go through and order it. So you gotta wait till the items are received before it's ever, so we're gonna post the invoices on Wednesday.
So I think you're saying to post the POs on Wednesday, and if no one's commented, then they would be paid on?
No, they would be approved the next, the next day, or the next, we really need to approve them by the end of the week.
And, and, and I don't know the vocabulary. What I'm trying to get, though, is what's their time that they have to look at them before some action falls? Could we say by Friday or by Monday or something?
I, I would say if, if we could get it done and looked at by Friday, that would give us time to go in and approve them and go ahead and get them in the process.
Dr. Pickles, what did, um, D O E say that's gonna have to be paid no matter what at the POs?
Food, safety, and anything, student welfare.
And no one on this board is to withhold that?
Absolutely not.
So that's, that's.
It's common sense right there.
That is common sense, Madam Chair.
I think it need to be added in there just in case.
If, if someone on this board is opposed to that, they shouldn't be on the board.
I agree, but it need to be added just in case. Can you, could you put that in there?
I, I, I'm not putting that in there.
No, I, I think if, if you, if you're opposed to that, we shouldn't be on the board. If you're not interested in the welfare of the children, let's just go home.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I wanna make sure that get done.
Well, it, it's going to get done. I mean, it's, all right, Becky, would you read the motion, please? I have a motion to have all purchase orders posted to the website by, by Wednesday each week. Each board member can request to have POs held until the following week if they have concerns. Otherwise, POs would be released on the Friday following the Wednesday they're posted.
And Friday when, Walter? Like Friday morning, Friday afternoon?
I, I'd say if we could, if we could get to Friday at lunchtime, that gives us the afternoon to go through the approval process.
And so that would give us Thursday, Wednesday night, Thursday, Thursday night, and Friday morning to get back?
If, if, if that's enough time, um.
They're gonna be posted before the close of business Wednesday? By five Wednesday?
Right, correct.
All right, so they'd be posted before fi, before five P M. on Wednesday, and then they have comment, they have until noon on Friday to comment.
That's what I'm proposing.
To call it, to comment or ask for one to be held for the day.
And, and I would suggest that if you saw one that you, you needed more clarification on, we could always hold it up right then and give you a little bit more time and then pull the trigger on it on Monday, but I don't wanna hold up the whole pipeline till Monday, yeah.
Absolutely. And I think what they're saying is on any particular POs that they call about, those are the ones you hold. You don't hold up all batch. Am, am I getting that right?
Yes, yes.
The other, the other question, um, this is, um, a question I have. I also would like the check registries to appear on the website also, so the public has an idea of what's being paid.
All right, would you repeat the motion, motion one more time, please? So it's perfectly clear.
Motion to have all purchase orders and the check registry posted to the website by Wednesday by five P M. each week. Each board member can request to have purchase orders held until the following week if they have concerns. Otherwise, P O's would be released on the following Friday at eight.
Thank you, Ms. Becky.
It needs to be, each board member has until noon on Friday to request.
Okay.
That the, that a P, that a particular purchase order be held.
Is there a motion to approve?
I made the motion.
Okay, second.
This is mine.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Alfred, second by Ms. Bell. Any discussion or questions? By a show of hands, all in favor? Oppose? Five zero.
And so, just one last point of clarification, the P O's that will be posted on Wednesday are the P O's that are wanting the process. The check registry that's been posted on Wednesday are the checks that have already been held. Is that, okay.
Just like it, the listing, this, that y'all are reviewing. Whatever I just did, remind, this one. We'll do that.
Three point four, staffing allocation plan, Dr. Pickles.
You asked, directed me to, um, obtain staffing allocation plans from other places. Calhoun County does not have one. They are actually working with Mr. Hamilton, the one that, um, completed our fiscal study, and attempting to come up with one. Gilcrest County, which is another county we were compared to, they're on spring break this week. So, um, I'm also, and I started working on our neighboring districts. Hamilton County, you did not hear back from, um, Taylor County, sent me a second email today, they're still trying to get with their finance director to get theirs, so you have a nice stack in front of you. And, um, the information thus far, I only have five copies, I printed them for the board members. That's our running total thus far. The last salary figure there, that's the contracted salary, that's not including the other part we could pull, salary through the consortium, so that figure is not added in there, those are only contracted salary amounts. So, that's our running total. Now, the running total is at the top, not at the bottom, so if you'll please look at the top amount. Now, we have had some other resignations, but they were grant funded, so I did not include those. These are all general fund positions, and I have not put the bus drivers in yet.
And these are people who have not been replaced?
Correct.
Um, I would like this to continue as people are, um, to be added to, and, um, we get a new sheet at each meeting, so we know what the.
If it changes, I'll, I'll, I'll continue to add to it.
So, these are the savings through the eighteen nineteen fiscal year?
These are through June thirtieth.
The eighteen nineteen?
Yes.
So, if these positions stay vacant, it's, the savings next year is significant, right?
And the reason the last one, even though that position was grant funded, we absorbed, I assigned those duties to people that are out of general funds, and that's how we're able to pick up and have some general fund savings.
And Dr. Pickles, on our, um, all these, these different counties, when you look at the, they broke it down, most of them, by the number of kids at schools, and so you can check that with each county, but when it talks about district staff, some of these counties are way bigger than we are, that doesn't really give us a.
And that's where I was trying to get Calhoun and Gilcrest. And Calhoun does not have one, and Gilcrest was closed for spring break. So, and Taylor has not sent me theirs.
On district staff, we can't compare ourselves to Leon County?
No, I'm trying to compare schools, though.
Right, the school part, because they break it down into numbers on the school part.
And that's where we got hung up the other day, is looking at the schools, we were working on the schools.
One, one, um, that I look, that I, that you have before us, um, Brevard County does a nice job of, of really spelling it out, of what, at the elementary, middle, and high school level, of what, um, especially with, um, the principals, assistants, um, counselor, and also with the, um, school secretary, bookkeeper, office clerk, um, based upon the school size, um, for elementary and middle, and so does Swanee. Swanee's very clear with what, what they, um, are saying, however, with Swanee, um, the numbers are, are not, they're, they're saying up to seven hundred, well, I guess it still would pertain to that. Um, and, and looking at some of these, the, the point I'm trying to make is that there's less administrators on their sheets than what we have.
And, and that's the reason I was trying to definitely compare us to what we were compared to in the fiscal study, and then the cost report, which DOE did that, so I was trying to compare, but some are already on spring break, and so I haven't been able, and then I just haven't been able to get the documentation.
And, and looking at, um, the service units, um, some of the schools even list, like, the number of months, like, say their A P's are, and here in Brevard County, their elementary A P's are ten months. Middle and high school are twelve, but A P are, the ten besides that is the ten month. My sister is a principal there, and she had said last night that their A P's are ten months.
Well, if you recall, our A P's are ten months, they're ten plus two, they're ten months out of our general funds.
Right. But the two is coming from title.
Title one. And then they have to work our summer school.
If that could be, um, possibly cut to eleven months, and they could, they could alternate their time, where some of that title one money could go back to where, for a teacher in the classroom.
If you're looking at Brevard, for their one thousand to one thousand ninety-nine kids, they have one principal and one assistant principal at ten months. And on the elementary level.
I mean, I, I, I realize that they are ten plus two, but I also realize if it's coming from title one.
So, you want them to be a ten plus one, alternating?
I, I'm just saying that we need to be open-minded and looking at what other districts are doing, because I, I know we get the pushback, "Oh, we can't do it," but in reality, other districts are doing it, so why can't we do it? I mean, the goings-on in, in Brevard County is just as great, or greater than what's here in Madison County. That, that's a, that's a huge city. And that's all I'm saying with it.
They've got in Brevard, seven fifty to nine ninety-nine, one principal, one assistant principal, one point five counselors.
And, and you know, um, we, we have spoke last night about the deans, um, or the other night. I have no issue with the deans being there if it's being paid out of a fund other than, of the general fund. However, um, in looking at this, they have no dean here. I, I mean, they, if you look at the elementary side, there's no dean, it's just what you just listed. On the middle school side, they do have one dean, one A P dean, it's considered an A P.
Well, you need to also try to find one that has a combo school, a district that has a combo school, 'cause that's strictly middle school.
What counties do have combo schools? Not many have them.
No, not many.
Have what, Ms. Williamson?
And that was also a problem I was trying to find.
Not many districts have elementary, middle school at the same school.
Oh, right.
So, you have to think about your behaviors, so when you're looking at that enrollment.
Even if you looked at so, solely middle schools, and only did it from one to fifteen hundred middle schoolers, and based it upon that, middle school, I would think, would be more challenging than an elementary school with behaviors. And do it, give it the benefit of the doubt, and have the higher up, it's still not generating what, what we have down.
And I don't know when deans began at Central. Do you, do you have any idea?
In the last few years.
The last few years, yeah.
But it has helped with, uh, um, referrals and stuff in the past couple of years.
It's helped tremendously, as I stated, they went down almost.
I think it went from fourteen hundred to six hundred, or something like that.
Almost, just under six hundred.
The other aspect with, um, Brevard County, which, again, I really appreciate this being presented to us, they truly do lay it out with what's, um, within each school, based on the enrollment, concerning secretaries, bookkeepers, office clerks, and it even breaks it down to the months, what should be twelve months, eleven or ten.
Well, do we have Central broken down? Like, for instance, how many are in the elementary school, how many are in the middle school?
If you'll go back to the staffing, um, our projected chart, it shows you what we project for each grade.
Have, have we, have we built a, um, have we plugged in the numbers into, I know the other night you presented the charter school worksheet? Have we plugged the numbers in, say, for Lee, for Pineeta, for Central, based upon their faculty, they have now, their salary and benefits, and everyone that's in that school, to see if we're falling within the range we should be for what they generate?
Yes, we have, we have, essentially, that's what I was working on last week, we have done a, a, um, the revenue side of, of the F T E, basically just like you do the, the charters, to see what they're generating. And then, we do have the numbers, and I can get more finite numbers for each school with the financials at the end of this month, but we can break that out. I did it in the past, a few months ago, um.
I was gonna say, is it the spreadsheet that you sent them? Doesn't that have everything?
Uh.
That you broke down?
It's got the rev, it's got the revenue side, but I don't have all, all, all the expenditure side by location in right this second. I, I understand what you, we need to see a school-level P and L, yeah.
I mean, I, I would think that before we could decide on what's, if, if a school's working within its, its parameters, we need to see, like, all the, all the teachers that are there, their salaries, all the employees there, to see if they're falling within what that school is generating, and if not, then at that point, we need to look at making cuts at that school.
Mr. Copeland, the spreadsheet you sent them back in January.
Okay, in January, I understand, that was, yes.
Because they wanted a listing of every employee, and you had that broke down by each tab.
But, but, but does that include just their salary, or does that include their, I mean, I know it includes their salary, but does that include with benefits and everything?
Yeah, yeah, it, it does, Mr. Alfred, and, and I can get an updated report by, by school for the past, through the past month, that'll show you, yes, because the way we, the way we do our payroll benefits in any of our expenditures, it, they're all coded appropriately to that location. That'll give you the summary, and then we can, we can pull the funding report through the end of February, and show you a listing of every one of those staff assigned to that school that makes up the total compensation, and benefits that are applied to that location.
The benefits that were in the paper are different than what was, it was higher in the paper than what's on the sheet you gave us. So, so I don't know if, like, total, um, total benefits were included on this sheet.
I, I'll have to look at that, I know we didn't include, I, I can't answer that off the cuff, let me, let me look and see.
But, but, wouldn't we need to include everything to, like, get a true picture of?
Absolutely, and, and the way our expenditures and our payroll and benefits are applied, we have spent a lot of time making sure all employees are assigned to the right location, funding, et cetera. We can pull that for you, and it should be accurate, and.
I'd like an accurate description.
Okay, gotcha.
Last, last night, I, um, tried to just add up, like, the total number of, like, with salaries, say, at Lee or Pineeta, and, and it came less than what you were saying on the, but, but again, I knew that the total benefits weren't included and all that, but, I mean, I think that before we can sit to see if, like, what cuts we need to make, we need to see really what's, what's there, is that making sense?
Well, I, I can get you, I understand, and we can, we can break down the school-level P and L's, and the detailed employee information that makes up the benefits and the compensation assigned to that school. Yes.
Which, which it has it on the other sheet, and I was trying to, like, see if it wasn't out of the general fund, to see, I mean, it was just hard to figure, and.
I, I'll try to simplify, I, I understand what you're asking, and, and yes, we can, we can get that.
I'd also like to see the electric bills, we've, especially with Greenville, you know, we've cut that, they're down to one wing, not using the auditorium, and just see what's.
Well, no, that, they use it from time to time, 'cause they do email me and ask for permission to use it, like I gave them permission to use it, so.
There's nothing wrong with that, you know, I mean, it wouldn't have been used five days a week, anyway. But, um, just, just to see where we are.
Mr. Alfred, on the, on the instructional cuts, when you're talking about the teachers at the individual schools, we take that projection worksheet that you have with the, uh, uh, projected enrollment for next year, and take kindergarten through third grade, the number of students in those three grades, and divide it by eighteen. And I take fourth and fifth, and divide it by twenty-two. Then I tell that principal, this is how many teachers you're allocated based off of your enrollment. This is how many teachers the district is gonna cut you from your staff.
Yeah, I, I had, um, I had figured that last night, and, I mean, I'd worked it out, and seen, um, I've, I've already, I've, I've done that, and I understand what you're saying, but I was just, I was curious that since you did present the, um, from the charter school, um, summary of where we, what school, what they were generating, I was just wondering, do we have a definite number of what, where we're at?
A true dollar amount?
Yeah.
Okay, I understand that.
I, I, I mean, I, I understand, I went through there also, and figured out how many, um, teachers were being generated based on the student, projected student enrollment. And, um, uh, again, it's, I, I just think it's something that we need to, to have, so we know better what, where we need to make the cuts, and, and again, at, at where, where do we figure in, like, county office? Do county offices picked up from the savings that are at the outlined schools?
It is, and.
When, when I ran this, when I pulled the school-level, um, revenue report, and, and looked at it based on the, the F E F P each school generates, yes, you're correct, you, you have that, and then you have a lump sum left over as far as, that's, that's essentially non-school, and, and I, I've got it pulled out, I, I understand. In, in a real world, in a real business, you would take all the other overhead, and you would allocate it to each plant accordingly, because our district office is working related to that school, related to this school, related to that school.
Transportation would be allocated between them, I mean, everything would be.
It, it would, but as long as we're, if we take each school, break down the revenue they generate by student, we already have all the expenditures coded to that school, payroll, comp, electricity, and everything. We can show you the P and L, just like I show you for the consolidated, and then when you see the salary and benefits number, we can run the funding report by employee that makes up that number for that school. So, I understand what, what you're asking for, and yes, we can, I just need a little bit of time on that one, but we, we can make that happen.
For, I mean, in my opinion, for, for us to be successful with our outlined schools, they've got to be within their budget.
Be within their budget.
I mean, and so has Central, and so has the high school. For the district to be successful, all schools need to be within their budget. And, and, I mean, that's, that's the pretty basic of it, I mean, if, if we're not, then that, that's where we get in trouble.
Well, and you, yeah, you're supposed to spend eighty percent of your school money, revenue generated on, you know, in, instruct. you know, in, instruction and such, and what you'll see when you look at ours is, if you just look at it at the school level, every one of them covers their basic expenditures with no, none of the other overhead allocated. But what you'll see is that there are some that have a much higher per FTE cost than some of the others. And let, let me get that up to date in, in part of my next package, but I, I'm with you on what you need.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Do we want to postpone this again until the eighteenth meeting?
When do we have to? Uh, uh, again, I.
You can eat no bite.
Anybody we're not gonna, non-recommend, we've got a note signed by April first.
And, and the, um, the April the first.
March twenty-ninth.
The April the first would be your, um, non-instructional or instructional administrators?
Anyone?
By April the first.
Which is March twenty-ninth. March twenty-ninth.
Yeah, March twenty-ninth is Friday. April first is on Monday.
Is, is, do we have a number amount that we need to aim for, Mr. Copeland, of what we need to cut? To where we need to go to? I know the other night, I mean, I mean, we need to, if, if we're at, what, what are you projecting that the fund balance is at now? I mean.
Right now? We were, uh, projected to the end of the year. We're gonna be right, we're gonna be right at the three percent is what we're projecting.
Okay.
I think you're asking the, what, what's the projected fund balance for nineteen-twenty, because that's what we're looking at if you have to cut positions.
Right, nineteen-twenty, I don't have all the expenditures pulled out that I can give you a, a, a good, there's so many moving parts to that right this second, um.
The problem is, we don't have a budget. We're working off the governor's proposed budget, and until we actually gonna have a final budget. I mean, and we just know where we're gonna, estimating to end up. So, I mean, it's a guessing game till session's even over.
Well.
We're, we're trying to work off some numbers.
Well, we, we do know that we have a hundred and ten thousand dollars in furlough days.
That's, that's for now. That's not for next year.
But, but again, for next year, if we don't, if we don't put it back in it, I mean.
You're saying, assuming everything else was the same yet, you at least need to cut a hundred and ten.
We need to cut that.
We have, uh, again, we've had these recent resignations of these positions. A lot of, some of them will not be filled. We're looking at some other consolidations there. I just need to spend more time on the, it's, it's, it's kinda like the chicken and the egg. We're needing to know what it is so we can make the cuts, but I need to know what the cuts are to make the budget.
Well, Mr. Copeland, you're talking about these resigna, now teacher resignations, they've gotta be replaced, right?
Right, but I was talking about some other resignations that, that had taken into effect at the end of January into the, the first part of February. Right, when, when, when I look at a staffing budget going forward, I would get with Mr. Stahlnecker, it, it wouldn't be, the instructional side wouldn't be.
Right.
The key instructional resignation we had recently is a twelve-month, uh, E S E staffing specialist that worked with D J J. That position's not gonna be filled.
Okay.
And within a twelve-month, and I, if I remember correctly, she had a master's. So when you add her in together, that's a pretty good job.
But that was also grant funded. That came out of E S E and I D E A.
So it's not on the general fund?
Question. Uh, we had, um, the, I guess, the little staffing service to come in to present for us. Are we considering those options as well for nineteen-twenty?
We are considering those options for nineteen-twenty, um,
Outside contract?
And we also, where, where that service would come into play is if we, you know, people that are in the drop that have to leave, that we need here on a per diem basis or whatever, that may basically save us money by using their services rather than hiring somebody back in that full position. We can run those, you know, hypothetical things. Yeah, yes, we are looking at that. No, we haven't pulled the trigger on anything or got any definite, um.
Cause the one that presented to us, they, I guess they specialized in substitutes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, and they, you, you know, with the substitutes, if all they did was take, there, there wouldn't be a lot of money. They're money savings, but it would take that chore off of our hands, and it would probably get managed better.
I think it was tossed out before to, to use a similar service for janitors as well, I think.
We, we had, we had looked at, at that also, and we talked about that a little bit, those numbers when we had that, that special meeting. We, we, we need to consider everything like that as we move towards, um, the end of the, the fiscal year.
That's.
Cause we do also have the O P S option as well for certain positions if that, if.
Right. The O P.
O P S, what's that an option?
A temporary employee with no, no benefits.
Yeah, the personnel, forget the, the meaning of the acronym, but it's basically working without benefits. Contracted services. Yeah, yeah.
You're talking about two different things, though. Contracted services are where you contract with a company, that company hires the person, you pay that, pay them a check and they pay. O P S is a, is a state term, that, in the, at the state system, they will have O P S employees that are employees of the state that don't get benefits, et cetera. We wouldn't really have the option of that. We have collective bargaining agreements, so. If you've got a, you couldn't have an O P S teacher, for instance, they would, they would have to be, they're a member of the bargaining unit. They're either gonna be, they're gonna have to be an employee. But some of these other positions like, uh,
Previews.
Like, like custodial, for instance, if y'all wanted to contract with an, with a, a company, and they would hire the folks and.
Under their terms.
Yeah, you could, you would have the option to do that.
Well, in the fiscal study, it was suggested to hire the temporary employee, the O P S. And, well, another way then is just to keep them on a part-time basis, and they won't receive, so keep them under the minimum hours. So they will not receive benefits.
All right, let me ask you a question, Dr. Pickles. You said that you have to know by, or let them know by March twenty-ninth. Okay, we can't do anything with the, with the schools right now, because we're not sure about who we need to let go. So we're at a standstill with that. Until we get that information, I can't say, oh, yeah, eliminate two teachers here and one teacher there, or whatever.
I, I, I can get the turnaround on that pretty quickly.
Okay. All right, now, I, I'm also looking at your necessary positions here. Did I bring my list? We've got our chief of CFO, which of course, he is the chief, and he'll remain the chief. But then we've also got a chief of human capital and a director of E S E services. Now, can they be brought down to coordinators?
You control the positions. I, I put in the PowerPoint that I gave you. I listed out all their duties.
The necessary positions, are there necessary positions? It was given to, it's this right here. It was a PowerPoint. Oh, okay, 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 good. Let it to now, okay, gotcha.
Sam, could you upload the PowerPoint to the board docs?
Yes, yes.
Please?
That, that's it, Mr. Alfred, right there.
I didn't write mine in. I've reassigned the duties.
Yeah, you did. But I want us to remember, we're in a small rural county where we, we have our underpaid teachers, a lot of low-paying people working for us, and then we've got some people who are making a very good paycheck. And it's just, I'd like to know how the board feels about it. Chiefs and directors to coordinators.
I think, I think a lot of that information will hinge on, uh, the, the information that, that, um, Mr. Copeland will provide us. And also, I, we can look at the other counties, I guess, staffing tables from the other counties.
It's hard to look at the district wide on these other counties, because every one of them is so much bigger than we are.
Well, I'll, let me talk about, you already know what Mr. Copeland does.
Yes.
Mr. Stahlnecker is responsible for the teacher certification. So, and there's even changes coming up with teacher certification. So he has to monitor their eligibility. He has to go meet with staff. He's had staff sign off right now, so he monitors their testing. So when they test their, for their G K and their subjects, he lets them know. And doesn't meet with them just one time, doesn't send them an email. He sits down with all of these staff to let them know, and that you have to test by this date, or else we will not, we don't have a choice but to non-recon, um, recommend you back. And so he sits down with each of these staff. He, he works and follows through with the fingerprinting. He works as setting up all these interviews. We do have a system in place, if you apply for a job, and some, you can list your three friends, whomever your past employers, and they can fill out the recommendation online. But I went a step further. I make him actually call people. And so there's a lot of legwork involved into our employees. I don't just trust the online evaluations. I have seen some of the applications that come through that I have to sign off on, they still say pending. So people do not always return those evaluation recommendations. So we have that, so he has to.
He's got a lot of responsibilities.
Could I please finish? So he has to follow that. He, we have to go through all of that, but he has to follow through. He sits here and tries to recruit, and we don't have people sitting here applying for jobs to come. So he, he has to track the principals down, going through the evaluations, if something's not right, he has to go back and follow back up on that. He's, he's doing a lot of this, on this fact-finding with some of our internal investigations. I had a concern on a piece of paper today, and, and Ms. Hill had to leave. I, I talked to her, and I've got to talk to him. He doesn't even, not even aware of it yet. Um, I just have to have him go check this out, because I was concerned about a transfer request. And the reason, what was listed and things. He's now assumed additional duties. And, but I had to give it to someone, but because of what he did before, it was very easy for him to pick this up. So, um, he's just doing a lot, and he does our equity and things, so. I, I just felt it was important to stay that way. And I noticed that, I know before, when I looked and received some information for twenty, they still referred to it as, um, H R. Now they're referring to it as human capital. If you listen to the state of the address by our governor, he refers to our people as human and capital, and that we have to invest. And this was just the education section. So our students and our teachers, they're now our human capital. So there's a ton that goes into personnel. And he, he works with our union president quite regularly, they made.
I just, I just have a question. I know back that workforce development had came and said they could do a lot of, career source, a lot, and, um, to help us in this avenue, and has that been looked into?
We were doing our non-instructional. They cannot do the instructional.
And, and, and again, I'm not, I'm, I know Mr. Stahlnecker's very busy, but I know that as a district, we have got to look at our finances, and, um, I, I'm just saying this, I was on the board in oh-six when Mr. Taylor was over human resource and transportation. And at that time, we had way more students, and they had the same teacher certification. All the things you listed just now, he had to do also. So I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that we, we can make a case for everybody in the district that they do a lot, but as a board, we have to, we, we have to look at the bigger picture with the finances and where we're going. Um, I, I know that Mr. Stahlnecker's in the drop. When does your drop end?
October thirty-first. But I would like to address the board. Madam Chairman, if you would look, since you referenced my salary being so high, there's a coordinator making more money per year than I am. And you, and I just wanted to point that out.
I wanna point something else out. It's six fifteen right now, and I bet no matter what school you go to right now, you know what you're gonna find? You're gonna find teachers still there. They're there at six thirty, six o'clock in the morning. I mean, they're all hard workers.
I, I understand. I'm not gonna argue with you. I, I understand, Ms. Gibson. I certainly understand.
It's, it's nothing about you, Mr.
Please hear me out. Please hear me out. I certainly understand. My, wherever I am placed on administrative salary schedule is solely at the liberty of the board, so it's up to you to wherever you place me at. But I just wanted to point that out. You're absolutely correct. And that, yes, there may be teachers there, but I'm not gonna argue. I, I receive no glory for my job. I just enjoy my job, and I do the job the best way I can, and take the compensation that I'm awarded, and be happy, and move right along. But yes, I, my drop is October thirty-first of this year, and I certainly understand that. And, and I will work until the day you guys tell me to go home. And I will take the salary that you guys give me till, till you tell me to go home. But I just wanted to point out, since you referenced my salary.
I never mentioned your salary.
Some, my salary was referenced, and, and I'm not gonna argue that either. My salary's referenced because of what my, what I make. And it's not the first time. But I just wanted to point out, that coordinator, there are, there is other people in this district at a coordinator salary that makes more than I do. And that's all I wanted to say, and that's all I wanted to address. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stahlnecker.
Well, you're bringing up salary. I'm gonna ask the five of y'all, because this is supposed to be y'all's primary job. And this is a second and third salary for most of y'all. Because I know for a fact that two of y'all are retired, so therefore you're at least drawing retirement and most likely social security. Mr. Alfred works in another district, and he also has part-time income through the nursing home. So, and then Mr. Daniels and Ms. Bell both have other jobs, so this is a second income. I am also, due to issues of shorthandedness, I am teaching at junk class at Valdosta. And I know it's already been questioned about where my priorities are. My priorities are to these students, and for over two months, we have done nothing to affect student achievement. So anybody wants questions salaries, there are pairs that make less money. And all, everybody seems to be questioning about our high salaries. I have been emailed about high salaries and to look at high salaries, and I have addressed that with a recent resignation, and I have now helped this general fund by having them absorb additional duties. So before y'all sit here and start talking about that, I suggest y'all start thinking about our students and let's address our student achievement.
Money goes to the students.
Absolutely.
And not only that, I don't, I've spent forty years in education. I deserve my checks. I'm sorry that you.
Children are our number one priority.
Yes.
My social security and my retirement is not a salary. It's what I earn by working for this district for thirty-five years. Everybody in this room, when they turn sixty-six years old, is eligible for social security. Those are not salaries. I do not work any other job but this one.
This is my main job.
I, I truly think what we're, the, the, what we're trying to look at is, at the time of, of Mr. Stahlnecker's retirement, we need to look at how we can be the most efficient and save the district money where we can, where we can get out of the hole we're in. I, I mean, I, I think the board here, and if we don't do that, we're not gonna be able to have student achievement, because you have to have money to have school.
And that's what it's all about, money.
Right.
I mean, this is the name of the game. If we had lots of money, we could afford to pay, it, it, the sky is the limit. But right now, the sky is not the limit.
Can I?
Well, if you look at the, the, this, the resignations and retirements we have before us, we, we had a coordinator resignation. So that's gonna go towards next, next year, right?
But she's paid out of grant.
But right now, those, still, those duties will still go right under these same positions.
And, and you know what? No one here is saying that people aren't gonna have duties and not gonna have more duties. No one had any more duties than Ms. Julia Waldrop when she was their director of instruction here in this district. So, so you know, I, 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 I've been here for a long time, and, and you know, everybody has had duties over the years. I, I mean, it's the nature of the beast. Um, I, 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 I don't know what to say other than, than that's part of it, but as. I, I, I don't know what to say other than, than that's part of it, but as a district, we, we have to do what's best for the district financially. And, and if, if that position can be done at the end of his tenure, then with someone being over that in some other place, then we need to do that for the good of the district. It was done in '06 to help us get out of our financial issues. That's why Mr. Taylor was put over transportation and over human resource, because we were in financial difficulties then.
And I'm sure he did it successfully.
He, he did it. Did he probably wanna do it? Probably not, but he didn't complain about it. He did it. And so, you know, I.
It, it's nothing personal. This is nothing personal at all. I know Mr. Stahlmaker does a fine job. He's got responsibilities, just like the teachers, just like everyone in this room has got responsibilities. But it's, the bottom line is what we're looking at.
Can I, can I mention something real quick is, again, and Mr. Stahlmaker, he helps me with a lot of areas that are my responsibility, and with us still getting up to speed and a little bit shorthanded, he's been good about filling in without any questions on the risk management side, and has really helped me a lot. And it would be hard for me to imagine trying to, to get by at this point without somebody as competent in that position. The next thing I'd like to mention is, I don't have governmental experience, I have private sector experience, and this is a tough role. This is a big organization, and it's, I appreciate, I enjoy it. But when you're talking about cutting staffing, and I think we've been through this from Dr. Pickles down, and luckily, we found some ways to push off some of these decisions until June, I always found, at least from the board level, I mean, you really need to trust your department managers, your plant managers. They're the ones that can tell you who they can't get by without and who they can get by without. And if you can't trust their input, you need to find a new plant manager. I just, when we're talking about these positions, I mean, I understand, we're, our compensation's got to get in line with, especially from the admin side, but I think that, you know, there needs to be qualified input from those running the locations. And it would probably answer a lot of questions that you're wondering about. That's just my input from the other side.
I would suggest that Mr. Copeland gets you the information to show you by each school the P and L, and so that you'll have the complete salary. And then our meeting on the 18th, you decide what positions you would like to eliminate.
Now, you've given us necessary positions, which I appreciate this information, but you haven't given us any unnecessary positions. Do you have any unnecessary, in your mind, any positions that you say, we just don't need that anymore?
I'm eliminating those now.
I know you combine, which is good, so.
No, I, those non-instructional, I'm eliminating those now, as it is. I'm not filling those in, on our staffing table.
Was it in this right here?
No, on, on the staffing table, where we had those highlighted. We are already eliminating those.
Is that due to retirements?
Retirements and resignations.
But I think what, what Ms. Gibson is saying, any positions that, that.
Can be combined.
That, that could be combined or eliminated. I mean, we, we got positions whenever we were gonna have to make the cuts back. So, at some point, those positions came up, were developed. And I guess what you're asking is, if, if you're saying what you can't do without, then what could you do without?
Right. What could you do without?
Right.
I'm not going down that road again. I've been down that road, and I asked for input, and we provided a list. This board took no action on that. And then it all of a sudden became Dr. Pickles' list. That was not my list. I had input from people. So, I will not go there again. That's the reason I'm asking you. I have told you a list. We are eliminating positions as people resign. They were highlighted on the staffing tables you received the other night, and I showed you, Mr. Stahlmaker showed you the ones that were highlighted in yellow. As people resign or retire, they are removed.
I, I, I guess the question I have is, with us not having definitive numbers, it's hard to go by hopes of people will resign or we can, they can be added to the list. I mean, I don't know that we can operate on hopes. We need, we need actual numbers where we know where we're going to and where we're at. And I think as a board member, I'm at the point where I'm a little bit anxious, because I haven't received numbers to know, to know what we're going to or what we need to cut to.
Then you'll need to wait till after session. I can't give you, I have no idea what our budget will be.
But, but with all due respect, we, we do know that we're gonna have the $110,000 from the furlough days. I mean, we know that.
The 250 for the step.
The 250 from the automatic step. If, if we wanna raise, try to raise the percentage up a percent, another $130,000.
Mr. Alfred, I, I understand, and we, I can work out, I've been pretty busy here lately, I promise you, and, but I understand exactly what you're getting at. And give me a few days to, to, to get a projected outlook for you, and, and it'll, it'll give you a better tool to, to make decisions.
I, I mean, I realize that the session's still in, but we, we do know that we have these things facing us, and that it costs money. And, and this is a time that we, we're gonna either have to keep people on for another year, or we're gonna have to make the cuts.
And, and the things that you highlighted, Mr. Stahl, is that gonna come up to $300,000, $400,000?
What is that?
That you highlighted, you know, we can eliminate.
I know.
We're not done yet.
Okay. So, we're kinda like.
In limbo.
In limbo right now. We're, we're.
You're talking about on the staffing table?
Yes, yes.
Once we look at the cuts with the, the students, I will have it for you by the 18th.
Oh, by the 18th?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Because the principals have to notify those not being recommended.
Yeah, that's right. We need to let them know by.
Correct. Because I will take.
Like I mentioned previously, I will take the student enrollment at each school.
Yes.
And divide it by the class size allocation based off of FLDOE's numbers.
Right.
And divide that enrollment by the number of students they have by what's allocated. Like I said, pre-K to three is 18. If you have 180, 80 students, you're only allocated and only gonna get 10 teachers. If you got 12 teachers in that grade level, and you, and you're not short somewhere else, you're gonna lose two teachers at your school.
But, but that is, that is, I hear what you're saying and understand what you're saying, but that would only pertain to teachers we're losing due to, due to being cut, not non-renewal due to job performance, because you're gonna have to have a teacher back in there.
You're absolutely correct.
So, that is just for people.
That will, that will cut you down to what is included, and like you're saying, and we've discussed on numerous occasions, to have your FTE drive your staff. That will do that. Now, the principals at the same time are gonna non-recommend teachers for performance. Those positions will not be cut from this number. Those positions will have to hire back to get us back to this number that were, that were allocated on the staffing table, based off of what you approved last month. I'm gonna take that staffing table and these projected enrollments and make changes to that, and then you will just approve another staffing table on the 18th.
The FTE numbers that y'all are using to determine the number of teachers and all of that, how do they compare to the FTE numbers we got in January that caused us such, all the problems? You remember, the problem was, we used, and we had to, we used DOE's estimated numbers, and the numbers we got in January are much lower. The ones y'all are using for budgetary purposes, are they the same as the January numbers we just got? Are they different, higher, lower?
The budgetary numbers that we use, and I think Dr. Pickles had shared them before I got in the meeting the, the other night, are based on, we beat it to death. And Ms. Hill and Shane Roland and us really, you know, worked on it. It's based on the forecasted FTE, but it's more comparable to the recent third calculation, okay? And I can re-highlight that for you, and we're, we're up a little bit, but what we've tried to do is, and DOE let us go forward with it, is you can't lowball your FTE too much. You don't wanna do that. You sure don't wanna estimate it high. We feel like we got a very level estimate. You know, we're pretty much flat going into next year, based on our latest calculation. We got, I got with Ms. Bars directly, I got with Scott, Mr. Bunce directly at the charter schools, and they can give you pretty definite. And theirs is static from what it is right now. The academy's maxed out essentially, and James.
I'll give you the exact figure. It's, we are seven less. We were 2569, and we are projecting 2562.
2558, 62.
That's kind of the trend, because we have been in a decline enrollment since I came on the board in 2002, every year. Sometimes five kids, sometimes 15 kids, but we are declining enrollment each and every year. I don't know why we thought last year we would have more.
Like, last year, when we did the, the forecast with DOE, it was at 46 more than the prior third count. And if you look back at it, it, it made a little bit of sense, and then when the actual numbers came in, it's 116 lower than, it, 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 it made no sense, and it.
It didn't, because nobody should have ever projected that we were gonna have 46 kids more than the previous year, when we had been declining enrollment for 15 years in a row.
Yes, I mean, we, again, I think, I think we've got an accurate forecast this year. I think we've got a conservative forecast for next year, and I hope that the surprise would be in the other direction. But, and that is by school, by grade level, by charter, and such. And that's how, I've already got the school-level financials for next projected year, based on the tentative, non-approved governor, governor's plan. I just gotta finish up dropping the hypothetical expenditures in, and I can get that done ASAP for each school.
Board members, I want to remind you that we were elected by the people to sit on the school board, and I don't, I don't want you to be intimidated by asking questions. I think we should be able to ask any question regarding money or anything that's going on here. I feel like we've been chastised because I asked a question. I'm gonna continue to ask the hard questions for the benefit of the children, the employees, and the taxpayers.
Right, and I do, I, we do need input. We get a lot of input. If we mention a position, we get a lot of input of why not to do it, but we don't get any input on what to do. Which one can you do without? This one you can't do without. We get a lot of input on that, but we don't get any input on the ones that we might could combine or recount, or do something with.
I did want to make sure I clarify, on our 2562, 2046 is to the district, the traditional public schools. 196 is to James Madison Preparatory, and then 320 is to Madison Creative Arts. So, 516 would be to our two charter schools, and then 20.
And the academy's gonna be 320.
320.
They're 310 now, aren't they?
305, I believe. I would have to log in and lock, but I believe they're 305.
So, they're gonna go up about 15 kids.
We, Ms. Williamson, I went, went through the same question you just had on the academy, when I talked to Ms. Bars. Their contract allows them for 328 next year. We went through their applications that they had in-house already, by grade, and whether they were coming from other district schools or not district schools. And she, she's had hers, hers is a lot easier to nail down, obviously, than ours, and.
She has a definite.
That, that's right. And, and so, the 3, the 320, I really feel like is the, the accurate number.
So, that would be 15 kids more, and potentially from us, might not be all of them from us, but.
Right, and they're likely, when we finish this calc that we're going through right now, that'll change our funding starting in April, they're, they're likely gonna be back to 310, but they did drop a little bit.
Okay, so let's review what you're gonna provide for us at the next meeting then. Mr. Copeland, what will you be providing?
I will provide our.
Just hold on, I have it written down. I've just lost that piece of paper.
We, we will get the school-level financial statements that'll show you the FTE projected based on the non-approved plan, but it shouldn't be, we'll get you the F, the revenue by school, we'll get you the expenditures by school projected, and I will work on Mr., with Mr. Stahlmaker on, again, we, we know the positions that have to be there based on the FTE, whether somebody's leaving or not. We can project the fill-in salary. And then the other positions that are there, we can drop in, it'll include the benefits and the, the total comp package. And, and then with that, we can give you the position breakdown that makes up those totals as, as needed. And then it'll have the other projected expenditures with the, the utilities and the other, the other items, the maintenance of the facilities and things like that that apply to each individual location.
Good. Mr. Stahlmaker, do you want to add anything to that?
I'm gonna be working on the staffing table.
Okay. All right.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
The staffing table, they're gonna be presented the 18th, is going to have the positions Dr. Pickles was talking about, that, like, the, the one that just resigned.
The, the whole list that are already there.
I get it. But the, it's gonna have those positions on it, and the decrease, I think you were saying that you may have a decrease of the number of teachers some places based on FTE. Let me show you. Okay. These numbers here is what the board.
17.
That's on 17. Is that what you meant?
Well, that's where you're highlighting, that's 17. 17, not 11.
The one I got highlighted, line 17. Okay, listen. I have my local contacts, so you have to bear with me, ones one length and ones another. So, this is what you approved last month. When we make the adjustments, you see where I added the 1920 column, the row? That's when we'll make any changes. And yes, any change will be there. So, you referenced, I think I already have the, the one for the ESE. No, I haven't changed anything yet. But yes, they will all be there, just like that. They'll be under 1920 instead of 1819, so you can see the difference. So, you go all the way to the, the other side? That's where you were, other way? Right side or left side? The other way, back to this one. And I'm sorry, you probably said this, but what is that, 1718 REV?
Revised.
Revised. So, you're saying that was a revision the board made during the middle of the year? Yes, that's what we had to fix. See, if you remember, when we were working through the staffing table, I gave you the true numbers. And I told you I'd have to go back and adjust that based off of placing the people under the correct funding code, once we got Skyworks fully operational, and that's why we have a revision. And that, that was done during the 1718 fiscal year?
So, that will be done for each school then?
Yes, ma'am. I will do that over spring break.
All right. Now, don't feel like you have to work over spring break.
No, I'm just gonna tell you, you have anything.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So, so are we go, we need to look at these, these other plans from other districts and maybe get some ideas of what.
Yes.
Of what you may would think, and compare it to our own plan to see.
Dr. Pickles, do you know which one of these that we have? Dr. Pickles, do you know which one of these that we have plans from is the closest to our size?
Swanee's closest, it closes. Swanee's larger.
Is it?
How much bigger?
About twice the size of our size.
Twice the size.
It's about the size of Swanee.
Swanee's bigger than we are.
And I'm talking about the population of the county now, I assume the student population's similar, but-
How about Taylor?
Swanee County's-
Taylor has not had, sent theirs yet. Hamilton has not sent theirs yet.
Madison has about twenty thousand, Swanee has over forty, and Jackson has, I think, almost fifty.
If you'll hold on just a moment, I'll tell you exactly.
Just looking at bus routes, Swanee County's got sixty-five.
Yeah. And Swanee County has a lot more landmass to deal with, because some of ours is in swamps and bay, and I have to cover the grass at work.
Swanee has a, a FTE of fifty-eight forty-five, and you do have that one.
That's almost, that's over twice as big as we are.
Jack, Jackson is sixty-one forty-three.
But, but even if it is larger, you can get ideas based upon what they're stacking in their schools.
A lot of their plans in each county, even though they're bigger, they break it down from five hundred to this is one thing.
Right.
Yeah, that's right.
Except for district staff.
Right.
They just have the list of their district staff, and they're, we're not near as big as they are.
Even, even your big schools, districts have done a good job of breaking it down per amount of students.
Bervard is seventy-two thousand, Polk is a hundred and four thousand, um, Volusia is sixty-two thousand, Leon is thirty-three thousand.
Leon is what?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three thousand. If you go back to the meeting on-
I have eleven charter schools.
If you go back to the meeting on January fifteenth, the F E-
Florida-Hawkeye, the Florida-Hawkeye.
And FAMUH.
So, you got those two university schools pulling down that district, too.
And more Florida Christi-
McClay.
McClay. They divided up pretty, pretty big.
If you want to know the size of any of the districts, the January fifteenth meeting has the third calc, F E F P run.
All right, so we'll be provided with some information on the eighteenth, along with the information that's already been provided for us.
And, and I would encourage, I mean, everyone needs to think about, of, like, what Ms. Gibson had said about from chief, chiefs to, like, coordinators across the board, and, um, again, uh-
And, and it involves the children.
Right.
This is why we're doing it.
Right.
We're not, there's no other reason to do it. I mean, this is why we're here.
It's personnel.
It, it's strictly dollars and cents, personnel. I mean, that's why I say, board members, you were elected. You, we have, we have the right to ask the ques, the hard questions. All right, any-
And, and I do think we need to take a, you need to have some really thought over cutting APs to eleven months, um, possibly cutting, um, secretaries in certain positions, possibly by days. Um, I know it's-
Several of the counties have some secretary positions that are, um, ten months.
And, and I know it would be, it would be tricky at your smaller schools to do the year-end closeout, um, but I do think if, if you're creative with it and open-minded with it, it could be made to work. And, and for the smaller schools, I, I don't know how, if, if we want them to be successful, and I do, I want them to be successful, I don't know that that's everybody's feeling, but I want them to be, have success. They, they've got to operate within what they generate, and if that includes having, um, that at a lower, um, days of work, then, then so be it. I mean, for a small school of, of a hundred kids, or a hundred and twenty kids, a hundred and thirty, two hundred kids, I mean, what, what do they do during the summer when the school shuts down? I mean, that's a valid question to ask. Um, I, I, I just think that we, we have to take a holistic look at it to, to help all these schools be able to operate and have success, and-
And, and that's the bottom line, Mr. Alfred. We want them to be successful, we want to be positive about our schools, because our schools are doing a good job, from the smallest to the largest. And I, I think there's been a lot of negativity thrown out there about schools, and I don't approve of it at all.
Well, it's, it, again, each, each school here in the district has something to offer, and-
Every school's, all the children are different.
It, each, each school has their own little, um, community there, and, um, they, all schools have something to offer, and we need to embrace that and try to make the best of it, where kids can be successful. No one school fits every child here in this district, and so-
Just, just like no one teacher.
Right.
That's, I heard that kind of slung around, about the best. There's no best teacher. There's no best anything. I mean, you're doing your best.
Right.
But there's no best, this person does the best job. I don't, I, I can't go along with that.
I, I, I agree.
All right, so we'll look forward to getting the information by the eighteenth or before. Superintendent's remarks, Dr. Pickles?
Um, I need Mr. Reeves to send his invoices for January and February. I've had a public records request for those.
All right.
Be happy to, everyone in mind.
Mr. Reeves?
I, I don't have any comments.
All right. Board members, Ms. Williamson? Ms. Bell?
I would like to, I would like to thank everybody for all their hard work, and I feel that respect should be shown to everyone, and no one should, here should be intimidated. I would also like to say congratulations to the Madison County High School basketball team. Go Cowboys!
Mr. Alfred?
Um, yes, ma'am, I would like to congratulate the basketball team for winning the state championship. That's quite an accomplishment. Coach Dempsey and his staff, the players, their parents, um, a great, great event. I'm very proud of them. I also would like to, um, um, thank this longtime employee here in the district who recently resigned, Ms. Paul Again. She's been in the district twenty-nine years. When I started at Madison Primary School in ninety-eight, she was teaching first grade with April Johnson.
Yeah, I remember.
I remember seeing them go down the sidewalk with her class.
I remember when.
And, and I, I personally appreciate everything she's done for the district, um, her leadership as a teacher, her leadership in administrative duties. Um, I thank her for her service. I hate that she's leaving after twenty-nine years, but I, I do appreciate it, and I appreciate all the people in the district for all they do and, and all the hard work they do, because often it's very, it's a thankless job, and, um, just as much as a coordinator, um, a coordinator does no more than the janitor at the school, or the teacher, or the teacher's aide, because at the end of the day, unless you've been in the classroom, you have no idea of what these individuals go through. And, and sometimes I think as, as administrators and board members, we may become disconnected with the reality of it, and, um, the reality is that no one in this district has any, um, higher or more important job than anyone else.
Amen to that. Mr. Daniels?
Also, I'd be remiss if I didn't salute Ms. Paul Again for a wonderful job, um, her time and service devoted to the district. Uh, and yesterday's game was a wonderful, heartfelt, overtime thriller game.
It was a nail-biter.
It was. It was a really good game. You couldn't ask for a better game. So, I salute both coaches, both Madisonians, uh, Mr. Hawkins, as well as, uh, Coach Dempsey for bringing home the first boys' basketball state title. So, and also I wanted to salute district staff for, for all you do, um, at, at every level, all the schools, as, as was stated, all of the positions, from the bus drivers to the, just everybody. And I wish you would enjoy and have a wonderful spring break, get you some rest.
Well deserved. I'd like to congratulate our basketball team, the coaches, along with the parents. If it weren't for the parents, we, I don't know what we'd do, they, the, the students probably wouldn't be doing that. And I also want to remind you that each employee is valued. I don't care if they're a teacher, an administrator, maintenance, lunchroom, cafeteria, para, and there's no one best person for the job. We're, they're all doing the job that they can do, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Alfred's second, by Mr. Daniels. Meeting is adjourned.